Council meeting. I'd like to thank all of you in attendance for being here. And also want to let you all know that tonight's meeting is being televised live through K O Y C, as well as recorded for later broadcast by our own M C M, McMinville Public Access Television. So, that said, if you have some cool hip hop ring, turn it off or turn it down. I'm just kidding, please turn all your cell phones off, turn it down. So that doesn't distract those who might be viewing from home. That said, to start us off, I ask Counselor Menke to lead us in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Menke. Before we jump into our normal schedule, I want to open up the opportunity for the public to give us any comments or anything that they would like to share with the council. There's a couple of caveats to that. Anything that's on our current agenda, we're going to have to wait until that time to speak on that agenda topic. Anything, as it says on the outline there, anything that is a matter of litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at a future date. So if it's coming up at the next council meeting, we'd ask that you wait to talk about it then. So having said that, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the council about anything? Don't all race up at once. All right, not seeing any, we'll move on with our agenda. Of course, on the consent agenda, we have the... Oh, we have a proclamation. Gretchen, would you like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Gretchen Olson. I am currently co-chair with Molly Lord Garrettson of the Yamhill County Chapter Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project. We partner with the Seroptimists International of McMinville Club, which supports our mission and goals as they fit perfectly with their dream to end all forms of abuse and violence against women and girls. We have two young potential Seroptimists with us tonight who have started their own Hands Club at Washer Elementary. We have Kinder Garrettson, want to wave? And Nala Nelson, both nine years old and in 4th grade. Inspired by the Hands program at their school, they took it upon themselves last spring to find a teacher to be their Hands Club sponsor and are now working on their plans. They're here tonight to lead us in the Hands pledge after hearing the proclamation from Mr. Jeffries. Do you girls have anything you'd like to say tonight before the pledge? Okay, we're fine, we're good. They've got lots of ideas of things they want to do at their school. We also have the pleasure of the Purple Hands Bear presence tonight, who happens to be a member of Seroptimists and is passionate about empowering children and adults with the Hands message of respect and equality in all relationships and acceptance of personal accountability. Our goal is for everyone of any age to feel safe in home, school, and community. As we gather here on October 11th, we are celebrating 11 years. The Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project has been part of our city. We can't thank you enough for this fabulous partnership we have enjoyed with you. Because of you, many of our city buildings display the Hands logo decal on their front doors and windows. The library even has the large three-piece set, wall set above its lobby drinking fountain. And if you check out a book next week, you'll probably have a purple bookmark, reminder of a pledge to end abuse and violence. You are the power of one, together we will make a difference. In closing, I would like to suggest that after 11 years of dating, we might consider marriage. In which case, you might consider naming the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project as McMinville's premier anti-abuse and violence program, as have other cities and counties around the country. If this were to happen, I pledge to find the funds for a billboard welcoming travelers to McMinville where Hands and Words are not for hurting. Just an idea. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to come around and read this proclamation with you.
Okay, let's get up front with him, you guys.
Come over here by me. Whereas a community without abuse and violence is a dream we all share, and whereas we acknowledge that any form of mistreatment of others is abuse, whereas abuse can be in the form of verbal, mental, or physical, and often escalates to further violence, and whereas we believe that all people have the right to live free of abuse and violence, and whereas we believe that every person can make a difference in stopping abuse and violence, but not using either action to control others, by not tolerating any form of abuse to oneself or others, and by developing healthy relationships based on respect and equality, and whereas we, together with communities around the country and overseas, recognize the Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Project's pledge as an effective tool in abuse and violence prevention education. Now therefore, I, Kevin Jeffries, Council President of the City of McMinville, do hereby proclaim the week of October 16th through the 22nd, 2016, to be our 11th annual Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting Week in McMinville, Oregon, and in doing so, urge all citizens to join Hands to unite as a family and a community to pledge. I will not use my Hands or my words for hurting myself or others. And witness herof, I hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the City of McMinville to be affixed this 11th day of October 2016. Signed, Kevin Jeffries, Council President.
And would you girls like to lead us all in the pledge then? And when you pledge, you raise your right hand.
I will not use my Hands or my words for hurting myself or others.
Nice job. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Next up, we have the consent agenda, consideration of minutes for the June 28, 2016 City Council Work Session and Regular Session. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes unless there's any other... We have a motion by Counselor Menke and a second by Counselor Rudin. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has passed. Moving on to new business. We have a presentation by the library director Jenny Berg to discuss Library Book Buddies. Come on down Jenny.
Good evening, councilors. Yay. That was so easy. Thank you for being here tonight to hear a little bit about a library program that we had this summer. And I want to start by talking about, or just mentioning, the vision of the library. It's to be an essential partner in creating authentic and meaningful connections between individuals and ideas and the community. And I bring this up because we really look to make those connections and that it's not just about people coming in, getting books, and getting the ideas and information from the books, although that is very important, but also that people are coming together to make connections, that the library is a place where that can happen. And we have also found that the library, as an entity even outside of the walls of the library, can be a place where that can happen, where we can make connections between the community members and ideas and literacy. And that's one of the things that occurred with Book Buddies. Book Buddies started two years ago, two summers ago, and well, I mean, maybe it started more like 13 years ago when we first got the Bookmobile. The Bookmobile was purchased through fundraising from the Library Foundation of McMinville, and it was something that went out to a lot of the schools, preschools, daycares, and things. But it got to the point where it was a little bit big for some of these smaller parking lots and places. We kept the outreach going, but we didn't necessarily use the Bookmobile as part of that. And we wanted to... In the last couple of years, we wanted to revitalize that Bookmobile and try and find another purpose for it. So the idea was to take it out during the summer to people who were not necessarily coming to the library. We have, as you know, we have summer reading programs every year specifically for children, although for all ages, but it's a really big deal for the kids. And we keep track of what schools they come from. And we found out that our least represented school was Beul School. We went to talk to Beul School and they have their own summer reading program. And they had a free lunch program, so they had a lot of kids coming to that program, which would explain why they weren't coming to the public library. But they identified some neighborhoods that were also not coming to those schools. One of those neighborhoods was Villa del Sol Apartments, which is behind Virginia Garcia Clinic, kind of locked in by some roads. It's very understandable that those kids are not really leaving that general area because it's not very safe to cross the roads and things like that. You know, they're right on Highway 18. So we took the Bookmobile out two summers ago to Villa del Sol once a week, and it was an amazing hit. I was really surprised. We thought that we were going to have to maybe knock on doors and things like that, and that's not what had occurred. The kids were ready and waiting for us, thanks to robo calls from the school. The principal, Stephanie Lagard at the time, was there to help out. And it was just, the kids were really excited. Every year, we were kind of overwhelmed by... I said every... Every week, we were overwhelmed by the excitement from these kids. So then I got really excited about it, thought, we're going to do this, we're going to get this, you know, bigger and better. This past... Oh, Hands and Words. There's the Hands and Words Bears. We did that last year as one of the programs. So we decided to expand the program this past summer. Went to Tice Park Apartments, Redwood Commons, Villa del Sol, and Washer Elementary. In all of these cases actually, other than Villa del Sol, which was a definite that we would repeat going there, these, either the apartment managers or the principal of Washer School contacted the library to ask for the Bookmobile to come to their location, which was a great thing and kind of a switch in something that we've seen happening lately in terms of, instead of us calling and saying, hey, could we bring this to you? They were calling us to say, hey, bring it to us. And that was really exciting for us. We went to each of these locations every week. So Mondays to Redwood Commons, Tuesdays to Villa del Sol, Wednesdays to Washer, and Thursdays to Tice Park. It was quite a busy summer. One of the things that we found the first year that we did it at Villa del Sol is the kids, when we'd arrive and we'd bring activities, we'd bring the Bookmobile, but we also bring lots of activities, and the kids would sort of swarm around us while we were trying to set up the activities. And we thought, okay, what can we do to sort of distract them while we get everything set up? And decided to have a partnership with the Parks and Rec Department, and they, through a grant, were able to send some staff people and buy some equipment, send some staff people to show up a little bit early and pull the kids away from where we were going to set up. And so these are the kids having fun with jump ropes, soccer, chalk, and of course, water games were very popular. Then the kids would have a chance to return their books. This is another thing we learned from the previous year where we'd be doing various arts and crafts activities or things with water and oil, or raw eggs, or something like that, and they would have their books with them. And that didn't go over so well, so we thought, okay, first thing first, take the books, all the books away from them before they get wet or covered in oil or paint or whatever. So here's the kids returning their books. And then we had them do various activities, STEM activities or STEAM activities, science, technology, engineering. And then if you STEAM is if you add art in there, and math. They're making slime here, which I actually thought about bringing samples of, but I wasn't sure if you guys would go for that, so decided not to. Anyway, the slime was a really fun hit. And then they would have a chance to get on the Bookmobile, check out library books and DVDs if they chose. I put this picture in there because I thought these guys looked really cool. And they look like they're on a mission. And they are on a mission, they're on a mission to get on the Bookmobile. Some of our partners, the Oregon Community Foundation, we received a grant from them to pay for some extra staff. The first year, we were able to do it, just kind of shoestring staff. But then with adding three other locations, we needed some additional funding to pay for circulation staff and a children's librarian. And we actually were really fortunate to have a children's librarian who is bilingual. And so he was able to ride on the Bookmobile and communicate with the kids and the parents in Spanish if needed. Friends of the library helped out with a lot of the supplies. And Y C C O was helpful in identifying some locations to go to. Another thing that happened that was really quite exciting was that Y C A P knew of the program from the previous year, and they actually asked if they could be part of it this year to bring food to the kids at Villa del Sol. So they would come along with the Bookmobile, and after the kids got on the Bookmobile, then they could go over and get produce, fresh produce that Y C A P had delivered. And it was pretty funny to see some of these... You saw some of the pictures of the little kids, and they'd be walking around with like a bag with a big watermelon in it or something, and just kind of trying to pull that along with all their books. Community Home Builders is the group that built Villa del Sol, and they were really excited to come on board. And actually, they gave some funds to help us with our free book giveaway. Housing Authority of Yamhill County, that was the... They ran a couple of the apartment complexes and called us to have us come out to their apartment complexes. The McMinville School District just being supportive in helping with the robo calls and making sure that there was support there at Washer. And then we received funds also from Rotary, Kiwanis, Lions, and Seroptimists. So it was really, this is another big part of it that I wanted to talk about just in terms of the connections. They weren't official partners, but there were certainly connections made with all of these groups. And that to me is really exciting, to bring the community together to provide all these different programs. Some kids on the Bookmobile. I think they're making Play-Doh here, is what it looks like. We did do a couple of surveys. This was, it's funny when you survey kids, you know, between the ages of 3 and 12, they have interesting answers. But a lot of them read more often than they normally do. Some of them read the same amount, some of them read less often. And I'm thinking, less often than maybe when they're in school. That's understandable, I guess. We're going to work on that next year, actually. And I did like this, they're in their own words. And then one, I learned that you can have a blast with books. Oh wait, I already knew that. And then we also had, like I said, we had a number of book giveaways. Studies show that kids that actually, that grow up with books in their home, and not just library books, but books that they own, that they can call their own, that they do better in school. And so that was a big part of this process, was to offer them books that were theirs to keep. And that was a really exciting thing to see. Some of the kids who maybe were not so excited about checking out books at the Bookmobile, when they were told that these books, they got to keep, that they were their own and they got to keep, they were really excited about that. And so it may have been something about, oh, you know, not wanting to keep track of the Bookmobile books that you had to bring back, but those books that they got to keep, they were all really excited about. And some of the kids that maybe wouldn't even get on the Bookmobile, they were really eager to pick these books up. And I'd see them just standing by a tree reading after they had their own book. So all the kids were able to get at least three books, free books over the summer that they were able to keep with them. And that's Book Buddies. We had a great time, the kids really loved it. We made a lot of, I would say probably 70% of the kids that came were Latino. And that was really exciting for us to see and really exciting for us to make that connection. And I think that some of those kids are likely to come to the library now, sort of knowing the people, knowing what it's about. I've seen a couple of, these two girls, the twins, were at the library just a couple of weeks ago and came in with their dad, who actually accompanied them to the Bookmobile during the summer as well. And it was really fun to see them actually at the library as well. And I think that it's something that we are wanting to do and we do at the library, where we're going, like I said, outside of the walls of the library to make these connections with people. And then hopefully, they are coming into the library as well. But we do, so the next step with this, the plan is to do it again next summer. The plan is to find the funds in which to do that. And then we also heavily relied on volunteers, which I'll be doing again this year. We had some great volunteers coming out and helping kids make Play-Doh and make ice cream and walk on raw eggs and paint and all sorts of exciting, fun things. And sometimes I worry when I'm up here in front of all of you that I'm just talking about fun and games. And I want to just talk about that a little bit in terms of the STEM activities. Although it is just making slime, or it's making ice cream, I think that some of these kids, that is their introduction. I'm sure a lot of us were raised with maybe more opportunities to do sorts of crafts and programs and things with our parents who were involved or available because they weren't working. And these kids, maybe that's not always an option. And to just be introduced to these things, even if they're not necessarily... They don't understand the entire science behind it, that it allows them to, the next time they come across something like this, to have it not be completely new to them. And I feel like it kind of gives them a leg up to the same level as their peers in terms of realizing that, you know, when you mix baking soda and vinegar, that it fizzes and that that's... They can build on that knowledge with these programs. And I invite all of you next summer to come out. It is a lot of fun. The kids are really very, very excited and enthusiastic about the program.
Where can one get a slime recipe? I know a two-year-old that would probably think that was really cool.
On the internet, every single program we did. But you know what, now, see, I left it in my car and I think I'll have to bring some in for you.
Any comments around the dais for Jenny? Larry?
Oh, fantastic, thank you.
I'd love to get an email when you are doing this.
Right. I'd be happy to. That is the finished slime product, yes. Glue, cornstarch, and water. Or not cornstarch, liquid starch.
Talk to him about the balloon thing too, I thought that was just really cool.
Oh. We, sorry, I didn't bring my props. I was at Rotary the other day and had a lot of props and did some mad... One of the activities that we did was you blow up a balloon, not too tight, and you can put a bamboo skewer through it without it popping if you do it very carefully. And that was a pretty fun activity to try with the kids. And they were quite successful at it. But it's a nervous-making activity for everyone as you're doing that activity. But it works.
And Rotarians loved it too.
Yes.
Alan, you had another question?
I did have one question. You had mentioned that participation was like 70% Latinos?
Uh huh, yes.
Do you have an opinion on why that high percentage of...
Well, partially the places that we were going, I think that was... At Villa del Sol, it's almost entirely Latino. Tice Park Apartments, similar. I would say at Villa del Sol, they're there and they're often at home without a vehicle because the family vehicle is taken to work. And so I feel like they're... They're kind of ready for some sort of entertainment. They're, for better word, they're stuck where they are in terms of at home and not able to go very far, and also that location. I don't know, I wondered about that sometimes too because even at the places where, Tice Park actually, there are... And Redwood Commons, there are other non-Latinos that weren't necessarily participating. And I don't know if they're inside with their iPhones or something instead. I don't know the reason behind that.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there's more of an aptitude or more of a willingness to learn new things and do new things.
Could be.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Thanks.
Thanks Jenny, that's really exciting. Next up on the agenda, we have an ordinance. Ordinance number 5012, amending section... Do I want to read all that?
Go ahead.
So this is, sorry, my microphone on. This is an ordinance number 5012, an ordinance amending section 3.10.060, Systems Development Charges Exemptions of the McMinville Municipal Code to Expand Affordable Housing Exemptions.
All right, and Heather from the Planning Department has a presentation for us. So take it away.
Yeah, so good evening, Council President and councilors. This is my first time presenting in front of you and I have to follow Jenny, who gets to talk about slime, Play-Doh, and popping balloons with bamboo. So I don't have that type of fun for you tonight. We're going to be talking about affordable housing development incentives. Very important dialogue for the City of McMinville. And what we're bringing to you tonight is the first action that's coming out of your Affordable Housing Task Force to try to create some tools for a toolbox to incentivize affordable housing in our community. I'm going to give you a presentation that sort of walks through what the issue is, how we landed at the proposal you have in front of you. It will address both ordinance number 5012 and then your next action item on the agenda, resolution number 2016-73. So the ordinance in front of you amends the municipal city code. And what it does is broadens the types of qualifying projects for what we call System Development Charge exemptions to help build affordable housing in McMinville. And then the resolution amends the building and planning permit fee schedules to allow for a 50% reduction in fees for qualified affordable housing projects. So those are the two different types of actions to take for the proposal in front of you tonight. So housing affordability, it's a really big, complex discussion. And the first thing to understand is affordable housing, it's a tough moniker for... And the first thing to understand is affordable housing, it's a tough moniker for someone like me in planning to talk about because it means so much and it means so many different things to different people. So I just sort of wanted to line up what the different types of affordable housing is. When is housing affordable? So officially, it's considered affordable housing if a household does not spend more than 30% of its total income on housing costs. That includes the mortgage or rent payments and utilities. So it could be, a lot of people think of it as just income-based. It actually is not. It's how, it's how someone is living in a situation. And you could have people in higher incomes that are living in situations that are not affordable to them because they're putting too much of their income into their household. If you're putting more than 30% of your income into your housing, into your household, it's called housing cost burdened. If you're putting more than 50% of your income, it's severely housing cost burdened. And then there's very different indices on how you, how you sort of identify that. Here in McMinnville, the median household income is $44,451. That's from the American Community Survey from 2014. That's the most recent census data for McMinnville. They'll release the 2015 data in January of 2017. So that will afford a typical mortgage of $175,000 if you take four times of the gross income. Lots of other nuances in there, but, you know, for a standard. And then it also provides for rent affordability of a little over $1,000 a month to get into that 30% quotient. The median mortgage in McMinnville is $1,407. And then the median gross rent is $853. So that gives you some idea of where we sit in terms of data for the community. Also from the American Community Survey, you can look at units and who is living in terms of burden, being in a burden situation in terms of household income. So there's selected monthly owner costs as a percentage of household income and bringing to you the mortgage. There's mortgage, people with a mortgage and people without a mortgage. Typically, those without a mortgage are not living in a burden situation because they're not having to pay for their mortgage. So in McMinnville, there's 4,481 units that are currently owner-occupied with a mortgage. Of those 277 units, or 6.2% of the overall, is, over 30% of their income is going into their household. So that's considered burdened. 1,159 units, so this is in addition, it's aggregate, it's cumulative. 1,159 units, 26% of the overall units that are, of people who have mortgages and own their homes, 35, are in a position of 35% or more of their income is going into their household. So that could be people of all different incomes participating at that level. And that puts the housing market into a certain vulnerability. Then you look at gross rent. So gross rent as a percentage of household income, there's 4,956 units that are rentals. 330, 363 units, so 7.3% of those are at 30% of their income or more, 30 to 35% of their income. 2,299 units, so 46.4% of residential, rental units in McMinnville are at 35% or more of their income into their household expenses. That's concerning. So when talking about affordable housing, it's defined in many different ways. So there's the affordable housing, which is 30% of your monthly household income or less. If you're spending more than that, you're not in an affordable situation. Then there's workforce housing. A lot of people will associate affordable housing with workforce housing as well. Workforce housing for communities looking at, what is your housing wage? So what do people need to make to be able to afford the fair market pricing in the community? Or on the reverse side, housing costs that are affordable to workforce. And then there's income-based housing. And this is where most people feel most comfortable when they're talking about affordable housing. So that's housing based on the median income of thresholds. And you hear about low, extremely low, 80% area median income. That's typically where people think when they're thinking about affordable housing, but there's all these different elements that go into it. We're going to be talking about the income-based housing tonight. Factors influencing affordability, income level is one of them, housing expectations. So our expectation of the house that we live in today is bigger than what it used to be 40 to 50 years ago. People want more space in a home. It's trending down. It's starting to trend down. That's something that we like to see when we're thinking about affordable housing, but it has trended up over the last 40 years in terms of the expectations in our culture. Land value is very, is a big piece of the quotient for the expensive housing. Land supply, which contributes to land value, is also important, especially here in the state of Oregon, where that is one of our land use components that we think about and work, work with. And then regulations and development charges are also part of the piece of the puzzle for affordable housing. We're going to talk tonight about regulations and development charges. The role of government in terms of regulations can be impact fees. So that's your, your system development charges and your permitting fees. Could be code restrictions. So we could be looking at zones that don't allow affordable housing or mixed-use housing or higher-density housing. It could be growth restrictions. So if, if you have a system like the Oregon has in terms of urban growth boundary system and a 20-year land supply and how to bring land into your community, then that also contributes to your land supply and your land value and can impact your affordable housing program. And then exclusionary zoning, which actually I don't see practiced here in McMinnville. It's good to see, but that's where you're setting up zoning that doesn't, that doesn't support any opportunity for affordable housing in that zone. We're going to talk about impact fees tonight. The history of where this first recommendation comes to you is from a resolution, resolution that you passed in April of this year, which appointed an Affordable Housing Task Force. And the same resolution adopted an action plan. The action plan had near-term, midterm, and long-term actions associated with it. We're working on the near-term actions first. There's four of those. This is the first one out of those four. And that was to memorialize the system development charge discounts for affordable housing projects. So the city of McMinnville has had a historical practice of providing discounts for affordable housing projects. And we wanted to memorialize those that weren't memorialized and evaluate those that were already on the books. So in terms of existing conditions, the McMinnville City Code has a section in it that talks about system development charge exemptions. In that, one of the exemptions allowed for 100% exemption for housing for low-income or elderly persons, which is exempt from real property taxes under state law. Typically, these are your multifamily rental projects that are receiving state and federal tax credits or other subsidies. And so they do go into a, they don't pay real property taxes. They're also in a program where it's a deed-restricted project. So for 50 years, it needs to remain as affordable housing. It goes through a pretty rigorous certification to get to that point. So as a city, it's easy to bring those online because, because of the program they're working with, with the state and federal programs, they have all the documentation to show to the city that they're a qualified housing project. So I suspect that that's one of the reasons why this was the sort of low-hanging fruit to put into the SDC exemptions. What it doesn't do, though, is it doesn't provide any type of incentive for other types of affordable housing projects that are targeting the same group, which is a lower-income group. So your Habitat for Humanity projects, which are owner-occupied or leased-to-purchase projects as well. There was also a resolution passed in 2003, which adopted a 50% reduction in planning department processing fees for low-income housing. This is just an asterisk at the bottom of the resolution. It also is an asterisk at the bottom of the fee schedule and low-income housing is not defined. So very problematic in terms of how do we actually administer that. And then in June 14, 1991, there was a memo from the city manager, and this is, this is an internal policy, that provided a direction to staff to look at a 60% reduction in building permits, plan review, plumbing, mechanical sewer connections, and sewer and park SDCs for Habitat for Humanity projects. So over the years, we've been implementing that as a program, but it hasn't been codified in any of our actual actions from city council. So the Affordable Housing Task Force looked at that and started talking about, how do we bring something forward that makes sense for us to move forward as a community and as a city that memorializes what's happened in terms of past practices, but puts it into a package that we can administer as a city effectively? So there's a couple of impacts to the discussion. One is a financial impact. SDCs, even though we haven't collected the revenue, it's already pledged revenue. So system development charges are a methodology that's been put together to pay for future capital improvement projects that have been adopted by the city and identified as needed to support new development and growth. So these are transportation sewer and parks projects. Without the system development charges, they don't get built. So it's relying upon this revenue stream to come in and help build them. Now, when the McMinnville City Council adopted the system development charges for these elements here in McMinnville, they, they did it with a full understanding that they weren't representing 100% cost recovery for those projects as needed, i.e. the transportation bond that was just passed. Sometimes cities do it in a full cost recovery process, other times cities will do it proportionally and find alternative revenue streams. But there is an impact when you give, when you provide an exemption to projects that would normally be paying these fees because they're not, it's a foregone revenue. There are two other impacted programs. The building fund operates in a similar manner to an enterprise fund here in the city of McMinnville, meaning that it has 100% cost recovery to provide the programs. So the program's relying upon those fees. And then the planning fund collects fees with a goal of 60% cost recovery. Right now, it is currently operating at a level of 15% cost recovery. And so reducing permitting fees will additionally reduce those streams of income and revenue as well for those programs. So the Affordable Housing Task Force looked at it, looked at what is the impact overall to these programs? We did a study over, since 1991, what types of projects have come through and what has been the annual foregone revenue. The two highest cost years were 2007 and 2008. Both of those years, we issued six permits. They were to Habitat for Humanity. And the foregone revenue impact was $27,000 and change for both of those years, respectively. So the issue summary is, how does the city of McMinnville craft a development fee incentive program for affordable housing that's meaningful, easy to administer, but does not unduly impact the program delivery of planning and building, as well as delay future capital improvement projects? That's the balancing act. The proposal in front of you from the Affordable Housing Task Force is multi, has several different components to it. The first one is to standardize the incentives. So currently, we have 50% off for planning fees. We have 100% SDC exemptions for certain projects. We have 60% SDC exemptions for other projects and 60% off of building fees. It makes it more confusing to administer that way. So after some discussion, we thought it made more sense to do 100% SDC exemptions for qualifying affordable housing projects. So the end game, the end need, is more supply. So how do we bring more supply online and give an equitable and transparent incentive to all for that? So there's four pieces to that. The first one is the original rental project. So the original language remains. We have elected to delete elderly because that actually is not respective to affordable housing. That's a, that's the type of person using the home, but you could have, you know, higher-end senior housing projects and lower-end senior housing projects. So what we're really trying to do is bring more affordable housing online. And there are certainly lower-income senior housing projects that are great projects, but it would qualify under the previous language. Owner-occupied and leased-to-purchase for households with an income at or below 80% of the area median income would be the added project. Homeless shelters, which weren't part of the SDC exemptions, have been recommended as an addition. And then mixed-use projects. So as we move forward as a city and continue to try to think about how to incentivize affordable housing with limited land supply, we'll really be looking at, how do we bring on mixed-use projects that provide that type of affordable housing in the context of a larger project? So for those mixed-use projects that have qualifying housing, there's a proportionate exception relative to that piece of the project that has the qualified housing piece.
Heather, can you hold on one second? Come back. The second point, owner-occupied and leased-to-purchase for households, are those two different types of uses? Or is it, the N there is kind of tripping me up a little bit? So...
So there are two different types of projects. And, and you have different housing providers building both in the community or planning to build both. So owner-occupied could be Habitat for Humanity. So they're, they're going to a full purchase of their, their home, but they're in a somewhat conventional way. But the price of the home has been brought down because of the sweat equity that's been put into it. A leased-to-purchase program is a program where a homeowner could be leasing the project from a housing provider until they get into a point where they can go into a conventional mortgage program.
Okay, thank you.
Would that be something like YCAP?
Yes, yep. So I did want to point out to you, another nuance that's complicated in terms of how we look at affordable housing in McMinnville is certifying income. So there's, you know, how do you, if we're looking at income-based project, how do we certify the incomes? Because that would be part of this process. We have elected to, and it's, and it's written into both the resolution and the ordinance, to use the federal standard that the state then adopts. So that's the HUD standard, the state then adopts it. And most of the housing providers who work in, in the area are using that as well. However, what's unique to McMinnville is McMinnville's in the Portland metropolitan statistical area. So we're held to the income levels of that statistical area. So here, it's $73,300 for a family of four. And then you see how it migrates into the extremely low, very low and low. So the 80% threshold for a family of four would be $58,650 to qualify for one of the projects that's exempted. And again, to point out to you, the median household income in, in McMinnville is $44,451. Now, the data points are a little bit different because the median household income comes from census data. The median size of a household in McMinnville is 2.4, so we're not talking about a family of four. So you have to migrate that into the table and sort of amortize it out. But it is distinctly lower than the Portland median household income, which is $60,318. So we're working with an income level that, where the income level's lower in McMinnville, but the threshold has been established by the Portland area. So other parts of the proposal is to, because of that, because of sort of how this will be used and the impact to system development charges into the building program and the planning program, is the task force talked about the need to have some sort of assurity as to budget impact over the year to these different programs. So doing best practice review of what other communities are doing, many of them put a maximum threshold for this foregone revenue on their program. The recommendation to you is to codify a maximum threshold of $70,000 per year, but allowing for the opportunity for a project to come to you as city council for approval if we get to that maximum threshold. So let's say we get to $70,000 and we're three-fourths through the way through the year, but a great project comes in that would bring a lot of benefit to the city, that there's the opportunity to bring that to you as city council and you, you can approve it outside of this maximum threshold. There's also a recommendation for a payback provision. So those owner-occupied homes that we're bringing online, the new, the new exemptions, and then the leased-to-purchase ones, if we're going to forego revenue to help support those projects and then they're sold in the next couple of years and that equity, it becomes beneficial to whoever's selling the, the home, the discussion was that needs to be paid back to the city. So the payback, and this is a typical practice in most communities. So the payback provision that's being recommended to you from the task force is a five-year payback provision. So that means that if, if the product, product is sold in the next five years after they get their certificate of occupancy, they will then pay back the full amount of the certificate of exemption. And will issue that with a certificate of occupancy when they come in for that through the building program.
One question on that, Heather. You're talking to payback of the discounts on the SDC fees, the permit fees, the planning department fees, all those discounts.
Yep, the aggregate amount.
So that's, that's your number you're working with?
That wouldn't be amortized over the period? It'd be, it's all or nothing. They have to be committed to the entire time span or they, to pay it back?
Yes. And what it does mean, and we've written this into the ordinance and resolution as well, is that administratively, the city is going to have to record this certificate of exemption against the deed so that it's there for when, if there is a real estate transaction takes place, it is triggered and, and comes back to the city in terms of dialogue. And then we will have to set up a, a way to administratively track it as well in terms of the timeframe. So we have added to the ordinance and the resolution that this takes effect January 1, 2017, because we want to be able to have the time to, one, put this into our software program that we use for our building and planning permit fees, and then also to set up the necessary administrative structure to be able to adequately administer the program.
Once again, Heather, a question came up on the five years for the payback. If there's a change of ownership in the property within those five years, then the payback would kick in at that time.
Yep.
And if it goes beyond five years, what's the provision if there's no sale within five years?
So right now, the way it sits is if there's a real estate... So right now, the way it sits is if there's a real estate transaction with a change of ownership, it's paid back in full within that five years. If it's five years and one day, the recorded exemption goes away, and the city's not paid back.
Okay. So if there's no change of ownership or in five years or less, then there's no payback to the city?
And then the last provision that's being recommended to you is an evaluation period of three years. So this is a new program for McMinnville. We want to be able to see, one, does it work? So the discussion was, let's put something together that actually serves as an incentive project and product and gets more supply out there, so evaluate whether it works. And then, two, also evaluate the impact on the programs, because we are talking about foregone revenue for city programs and projects. So the financial impact, with the maximum threshold of about, of $75,000, and that's a combined threshold for both the building and permit fee reductions, as well as the SDC exemptions. That equates to approximately what you see there on the screen for the various different SDC capital improvement projects and programs involved. It can vary based on the type of housing project that comes in. So a multifamily project per unit is a little bit different than a single-family dwelling unit, but overall, you're probably looking at an SDCs per unit of $7,300, more or less. And then building program fees are relative to the different types of home products that are being built, and the planning fees are fairly minimal based on the subdivision itself. So to put this into some sort of perspective, the Parks Development Fund anticipates about $275,000 in SDC collections for the fiscal year we're in currently. This program, if all $75,000 was maximized, then it would reduce that collection by 6%. We had some discussion of $150,000 originally. That impacted the Parks Development Fund by 12%. There was a lot of dialogue that that really is a significant impact to being able to get projects done in the, that the parks is planning to do through their capital improvement program, and so we didn't want to impact it by that much. So with that said, we did circulate this amongst staff to make sure everyone was comfortable with it. It was reviewed by Mike Biset, the Community Development Director, Jay Pearson, who's here tonight, the Parks Director, and David Koch, the City Attorney. The, Mike, the CDD Director, had some administrative concerns relative to, you know, bringing online, putting it into our software program, so that's why we have the January 1, 2017 effective date. But because his program's not at a full cost recovery, his transportation and sewer programs and other revenues needed to fund these projects that are in the capital improvement plan, he didn't feel that this was overly impactful to them. Jay, we'd like to have, Jay and I talked at length about impact to the Parks program and the SDC methodology associated with that. And then we also talked about the payback provision, and Jay had some concerns about the five years. Was that long enough in terms of the foregone revenues? So we're talking about $10,000 per unit, more or less, when you add the building and planning fees into this. So should that payback provision be a little bit longer, perhaps 10 years? So I wanted to make sure we brought that to your attention tonight. That was a discussion that he and I had after the Affordable Housing Task Force had made their motion on their recommendation.
Was that discussed? Was that...
Well, there was a discussion of amortization and then the full payback. No, we did not discuss 10 years. In all honesty, it probably should have come up, but it didn't. So it might be something that we might want to change as a part of it, or consider maybe full payback for five years and maybe amortize it after that or something to that effect, to really make it complicated. So it's a, you know, I'm just throwing that out. Yeah. But no, it is a consideration, because we don't want the park fees to be severely damaged by this.
Yeah.
Yeah, so some of the, it's all a balancing act, right, in terms of trying to find the sweet spots for everything? When talking about the payback provision and the administration associated with it, you know, the longer it runs out, the more administration it is, the more complex and nuanced it is in terms of the amortization, everything, it becomes more complex in terms of administrative program as well, and at some point in time, it becomes more costly to administer than the benefit yields for that administration. So...
How does Habitat, I know there's a time span in which they have to stay in the home, and if they sell it within this timeframe, they also have to pay back something.
I think they have something like five years, too.
I don't know if it's five or eight, but it's something like that. Do you know?
Yeah, so the standard across the state is five years for a payback provision. I couldn't find that there's any legal reason for that, but it could be a programmatic reason for that.
Crack of its head. We, you know, you're looking at a committee that has a number of nonprofits that are interested in this and would like everything to be a total exemption, and then you're looking at a few counselors in town, or one counselor and a few townspeople that are going, you know, really concerned about this. And Heather, you know, brought in the additional step of going out and talking to the department heads, which helped tremendously to give us some perspective on this. I feel like it's fairly well-thought-out presentation.
Yeah. If we're looking for builder incentives with the discounts, then the payback has no ramifications on the builder incentive as far as going through the builder's mind. It's all a function of who's going to pay that money back when the house is sold and during what time period to the city. So there's no, if we're looking at helping the builders, then the payback is inconsequential.
Yeah, and I did visit with YCAP and with Mary with Habitat in terms of how many of their products are actually flipped after a short period of time, so to speak. So with YCAP, I can't remember the numbers, but it's very, very minimal, because it was one or two over, you know, double digits, 20 to 25 projects that they've done. And the reason being is these are people who are so grateful and thankful to be homeowners and in a situation that they can afford.
Yeah, Habitat really seems to have a good model down, and it's based on that sweat equity.
Well, it's based on sweat equity, and, you know, in addition to that, they are on the hook for, they have those five-year times that they have to be sure they don't sell or turn it or anything. But they are also very grateful to get those homes. I mean, it's a really big deal for the family to get those. And I don't know, in the time that I was on the Habitat Board, which was many years ago, I only remember seeing one sell during that period of time, and they were not using the program that they're using now, which is much more restrictive.
Yeah. Well, I could see where possibility of something going into escrow and extending escrow out past five years and one day and avoiding paying the $7,000 or $8,000 they would have to pay.
Yeah.
So, I don't know.
I tend to think 10 years might be a safer approach, just because I, I don't know if it's still the trend now, but it used to be, people would get a mortgage and they would think, you know, you'd buy down your interest and everything, you'd think, if I stay in this house for more than five years, then, you know, I'm losing money or something like that. So there's some, they're already enticed to get out of the house before that time, or... So I'm kind of more under the feeling, maybe 10 years might prevent some of that activity.
In many cases, like Habitat, they're not paying any interest.
Right.
So the interest is sort of foregone. So they're highly incentivized to stay there unless they've got heavy-duty medical bills or something like that, which causes them to want to get out.
Or their financial situation improves and they can...
Yeah, that's a possibility, too, although not always something that happens.
As far as being able to get the money back, would we put like a five- or 10-year lien on the property? So it would expire? How would we be able to enforce it? How would we monitor that?
So from my knowledge, we don't have an internal city lien process, so we would record the document, this certificate of exemption that we would create would be recorded on the property. And so when they pull the record, the title record, it will show up as part of that.
Okay. It's basically the same conclusion there. Okay. Anything else? Larry, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I would agree on the five, I think the five year is too short, and I think that should be extended out a little further. I would be opposed to the prorating it after, I think that's just too much work for the planning department.
Yeah, I would agree.
Alan, are you okay with going to 10-year on that?
I agree with Heather that the administrative enforcement of it would really be cumbersome if it went that long, but I'd definitely take a look at something over five. I have another question, though. Are we in, are you done, or should we wait on the questions?
No, I'm...
Got the question slide up?
I'm on my question slide.
See it. So going back to the affordable housing, and by definition, of 30% or less of a household income, and that's total income coming into a household, whether one or two work, or more. So just going through some quick numbers, on a, if you had $4,000 of income, or household income, 30% of that would be basically $1,200 a month that you would qualify for affordable housing. Am I on track here?
Mm-hmm.
So the, we need to use the numbers of the Portland index.
Yes, and that's why I started off by saying, I would prefer we get away from the dialogue of affordable housing when we're talking about income-based housing.
So affordable housing versus low-income housing?
Right.
What's the definition of the difference between the two?
So low-income will be based on this program of what you define what the median income is, and then people making different percentages of that income, because it's relative, you're assuming the market's meeting the median income, and then the market's not meeting the extremely low, very low and low. Because affordable housing, and this is what we were talking about the dinner session, we haven't done a housing needs analysis. So of those units that are rental units that are in this grossly burdened situation, so 35% or more of their household incomes going into their home, or those units that are, you know, owner occupied with a mortgage, we don't know what their situations are, their income levels, maybe they're just in over the head, who knows? We need to go through that process. But we do know that renters are considerably more burdened in McMinnville than homeowners. 46% at 35% or more is a large number, and typically renters are in a lower-income program. So...
Okay, thanks. All right. If nothing else, Heather, I would like to open it up to the audience, if there's anyone who'd like to comment or give us any insights into this from the presentation.
Elise might have some...
Elise, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Comments she'd like to give.
So I'm Elise Huey with the Housing Authority. Yeah, I'll do that. With the Housing Authority, I'm Hill County, and I'm part of the Affordable Housing Task Force. And we didn't talk about the 10-year recapture. I mean, I almost would suggest that Habitat and community home builders are talked to, because I have the question, if somebody loses a house because maybe their medical bills or something Heather alluded to, and they're upside down, where does that money come from that was basically subsidized to that house at that point? So how does that...
Remain even if it was five years? If they came into that in five?
Well, I think, I'm just saying, I would think that that would be more likely to happen after the first five years, something in that. I don't know. I mean, I can't speak for those two programs. I mean, with multifamily housing, we have to do affordability for 60 years, so it's not an issue. And I agree that any multifamily would, 10 years would be fine, but I can't speak for the single-family homeownership.
Thank you.
Do we want to maybe consider sending it back to affordable housing and discussing the 10-year option?
Yeah, it's not a...
And having it come back to us?
If there's no major time constraints, I think that's a really good idea.
So otherwise, you like the whole process?
Yeah, I wish we had a full contingent of counselors here.
Yeah, it'd be nice, yeah. I wish Remy were here, but...
Review it all.
Come back.
Yeah, when we come back. So maybe what we'd like to do is just, you know, discuss that with the Affordable Housing Committee and just, you know, talk to Mary and other people that are involved in that sort of housing, just so we can get a feel for how it'd affect them and then come back next month.
Hmm.
Yeah, I think even if they decide to go up to five, given a little bit of justification why that was a better choice over the 10 would be welcome.
Because most of these counselors are just getting this information right now, and it would be good to have a little bit fuller understanding of the five-year.
We can do that. I mean, it's not, since we needed time to put the administrative structure together and it's not effective till January 1, 2017, there's definitely the opportunity to dialogue it.
Okay, but we're coming close to January, if you're leaving, so...
Well, we'll bring, we meet October 26, so we'll be bringing it back in November.
And in my mind, I don't, I guess, I'm willing to, I think we should be more flexible. I don't think it's either five or 10. I think we could have something in between.
Yeah.
Like seven and a half.
I mean, but I think if we're going to land on a date, there should be a reason why, not just, you know, that's what everyone else is doing. If that's the reason, but I think it should be recognized, this is why we have this date.
Well, and maybe it's just looking at the average length of stay. I mean, maybe it is a non-issue, maybe 10 years is any of a different than five.
It may not make any difference to the Habitat people. I don't know. I can't remember how long there, it is. Five seems to be right, but it may be eight, like Kevin suggests, so I'm not sure. It's been a long time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the guidance to the staff is to send us back to the Affordable Housing Committee and ask them questions about the time limits, so...
Very good. So we'll plan, tonight was the first reading of this ordinance, and we'll plan to bring it back for a second reading at the first meeting in November?
November 8.
And at that time, there'll be a recommendation on whether to retain the five years or amend that section of the proposed ordinance.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Heather.
Do we need to do the next resolution?
Yeah, so then the question is, do we want to move forward with Resolution 2016-73 tonight, or postpone that for action until the November 6 meeting as well?
So council president and counselors, that's impacted by the payback provision as well, because it will be part of the certificate of exemption. So my recommendation is we bring that back, too, because I believe there's language in the resolution regarding that.
Well, Heather, nice job. That was your first presentation. I give a lot of presentations, a lot of PowerPoint presentations, and that was fabulous. So I was able to follow along. I liked how you bracketed, this is where we're going next. That was really slick. I'm going to have to implement that. Thank you. Okay. All right. There's actually nothing else on the agenda now.
Right, so then the last item, the 2016-74, we discussed in the dinner meeting, pulling that from consideration tonight, pending the completion of a downtown parking survey and evaluation, and needs analysis, so...
Okay. So that brings us into advice and information items. Councilor Yoder, what's new on your neck of the woods?
I have nothing new. We have not met since the first part of September for the Parkway Committee, but we will be meeting next week, I believe, the 3rd Thursday.
I noticed driving through Dundee, it says opening or due to completion in the winter of 2017?
Yeah, that's next, that's a year from now.
Okay, I was thinking, is that January or December?
That's, we were giving them a bad time about that, but ODOT says it's a year from now.
So, okay, so it's next, okay. One can wish and hope. Kelly?
The YCAP Executive Board hasn't met for two months, so hopefully I'll have some news next week. I did attend a DMO meeting and was, they have come up with some new advertising, which is quite interesting, and really a lively and fun group, so anybody who is looking for something to do on that particular Wednesday, or I think it's on a Wednesday, you should come and watch them, because they're quite entertaining. Jeff has a great group going with it.
That is true. Ellen?
Well, the Airport Commission is excited about the reconstruction of the runway out there. Heather, do you know, talk to Mike about when that actually starts? I know we approved the grant and the contract, but...
I know we approved the grant and the contract, but that's coming up, isn't it?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I actually do not know that.
Anyway, I think it's going to come up this fall, start construction, maybe even next one, so that'll be exciting.
As for me and the COG, we...I had a really exciting meeting with them last week. We went over the employee handbook. That was really exciting and fun time.
It's good.
But, yeah, Jenny Mesmer is the new Director of the COG, and, you know, during the last couple of years, they had some employment issues, and they realized they had a lot of gaps in that handbook that they had to get fixed. And so it was...it's a really, really good document. Now, in fact, City County Insurance helped them draft a lot of it, which was really nice. And that's all I got. Elise, what's new with you?
Well, just having a date. Two officers who are currently training, one just correctly, they're having a buddy who starts his road training. And then I've heard complaints by officers about the application for the way it's changing its form. But the first order, opening of three, they're not supposed to finish for us, and we're going to stand there. We currently have 27 applicants that we're going to enter into oral work. And then our lateral opening, and it closes on...excuse me, on 21st of October at 5:00. And then we're hoping to kind of do those two hiring processes, juggling one another to hopefully get forward by candidates to be able to do the process.
Excellent. Good. All right. Jenny, anything else besides slime and books?
We are just finishing up a project to put RFID tags in all our library collection, radio and frequency identification tags, which once the entire Chemeckin Consortium, all of those libraries get those tags in place, we'll be able to use radio and frequency or our circulation procedures. And I think we'll have a dramatic effect on the level of patient experience, which is exciting. Because there's quite a few libraries in the system, say the public library being one of them, or it's probably not going to be fully underway and implemented until next year. But it's an exciting start of the program.
So is this...you're going to have like a Geiger counter to go around in the shelves and try to find the missing book?
Yes.
That's really cool.
And it's been quite a project, because we basically have to touch every single item in the collection to put a sticker on it that has that RFID information.
Yeah. Really cool. Thanks, Jenny.
I'll be back to talk about that.
Jay?
I'll mention that on Saturday, October 1, I attended the Kiwanis Auction, annual auction, and they presented a deposit check for $124,000 plus for the playground in North West Stairway Park. They've been working for the last few years to raise dollars. They exceeded their commitment of $115,000, so that really represents an outstanding effort of grant writing and raising pile efforts. I think over two years of raising pile efforts for the playground, over 100 people donated between $50,000 and $5,000 to support the project from the community side. So it's just been an awesome effort. They also inspired, or helped inspire, a very generous gift from Sunrise Rotary Club of $7,500 for a particular piece of equipment. So in total, the community has raised and contributed over $132,000 for that project. So it's really an awesome effort. We appreciate it. David Koch and I met with Stafford Land Company last week. We're talking to them about sharing of costs for Beyond Ranch Design Services that have bought the park, and that's our western boundary of the park, and sharing the construction cost of that same structure beyond Ranch Drive. So we're progressing slowly, but we're progressing. A lot of this is behind the scenes at this point, but we're hoping that by next spring we'll be in the construction phase.
Excellent.
That was a lot of good news and just a lot of reflection on how brave this community is in giving to the projects in the neighborhood.
Thanks, Jay. Scott, anything?
We always got projects going on in IT. We're pretty stable these days, but a couple things, I guess, the last one or so, is we improved the wireless vastly in the community center, the senior center, which is a big deal for people taking classes there, because they tend to bring all their devices with them anymore. They don't expect a lab. They want to know how to use their tablets, so they bring twelve tablets at a time.
Oh, yeah.
Fast wireless, to be able to learn how to use that. So we saw that was real deep and took care of that, some pretty high-speed stuff in multiple locations, so that was a good thing. All in September, August and September, we brought in the new fire hall for the city, and the fire hall controls all the traffic, all the different traffic tools in and out of the city. And now that we're almost about a month out from that implementation, we've been kind of taking a break, looking back and seeing all the traffic going through with some of our new tools, and tightening up a lot of rules here and there. See some traffic and say, no, we don't want that. Now that we have those with the data to work, we can really start to fine-tune and type things down what they need, listen up what they need. So that's where we're positioned for a long time to come. And even though it's October, we're starting to look at projects for the budget ready, because we're way in front of the curve in terms of what we're thinking about doing with departments, even in 2017, 18. So we're doing a lot of long-term planning with police records, for example, Chase Parks, and talking and throughout the city, and a lot of infrastructure projects that we need to start looking at, get things ready to get to departments, and departments getting their budgets.
You're really busy, for sure. Thank you. Heather?
Yeah, so I'm planning, I wanted to let you know, we have a couple of things happening at the Planning Commission this month, which will then be making their way to you. They're looking at amendments to the sign code to make it more content-neutral, that's a constitutional review. We're also looking at the sign amortization that was adopted many years ago, that's coming to expiration, and how to put together a program that's in partnership with the business community so that we can achieve the intent, but do it in such a way that it's kinder and gentler. And then in November, we have a public hearing scheduled for Stafford Land Company. They've come in with their subdivision plan for over 200 units up in the northwest area there by Hill Road. And then also just today, we received the land use application for the addition to the Redmond...excuse me, the McMinnville High School project that passed through the bond. And so that will be a public hearing in November as well.
All right. Rose?
Well, first of all, I want to say that it's very different sitting here without a keyboard in front of me. But we've been very busy standing up an HR department in a city that's not had an HR department before, so that's keeping me running quite a bit. We have Melissa here on board, and she's doing an awesome job, and I know you'll all support her really well. And we have...come on. A local government dinner coming up on Thursday, October 27, and we're going to need to know who will be attending. We will need to have our RSVPs in to Jennifer in Carlton no later than Wednesday, October 19th, so if you're planning on attending, please let me know before then. And December is the city of McMinnville's time to host the local government dinner. We'll be having it at Golden Valley again, and so just put that one on your calendar. Rose, what's the date on that?
Yeah, what is?
The date? For December, I believe it is maybe December 30. It's the first Thursday in December. It gets away from the 30th.
That's the first.
Is it the first?
First is...
Okay, then that's what it is.
Okay.
Thank you. That's it?
Thanks. Melissa, do you have anything for us?
I don't. I'm just excited to be here, and it's been great getting to know people and figuring out all the great projects that we're going to be working on. So it's quite a few things that we'll be doing with records management and municipal codes, so lots to come.
All right. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything about county court?
No.
No, good. Still convicting people for doing stupid things. Unfortunately, it won't stop. And City Manager, anything else going on at the White House?
No. There's a lot going on, but quite frankly, I've been scrambling so fast that I'm not quite sure what to report on or what not, so I'll catch you up next time.
Well, Candace, we're just so grateful to have you here, and just think I'm speaking on behalf of the entire council and staff. They're just really happy to see you and glad you're here.
Thank you.
So, thanks for coming back. All right, and if you need any help gardening, and now that you're here, Kelly, I've seen it, she's an excellent gardener, and she'd be happy to help.
Yeah, and you can get Kevin to mow your lawn.
I can't even mow my lawn.
I know.
All right, well, if there's nothing else, we are adjourned.